Thank you, sorry. Go ahead.
Have a motion to go back into public session.
So moved.
Second move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for January 25th, 2021. We would please stand to the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved one, especially the grandfather of Raymond Finney. We are up to public comment for agenda-related items. If that did anybody send in public a comment on agenda-related items?
No, they did not.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to be with you this evening to present some important items regarding our district. We have a budget presentation this evening regarding co-curricular and athletics. We also have a curriculum and instruction presentation that Mrs. O'Shea will facilitate along with the administrations of our middle school and high school. And I will be providing our board and our school community with an update regarding COVID and quarantines. And it feels as though so much has changed with regard to so many of these things and sharing some additional information with our school community about some plans for the remainder of our school year. So we are going to begin this evening with a presentation on, we'll start first with Yvette. Did you pull one up? I was going to start with the curriculum presentation, but we can start with the budget if that's what you were pulling up. So we'll begin with the curriculum presentation. We're going to start with our secondary curriculum presentation. There are some, what's important is that even in light and in spite of the pandemic that's bear down on us, that we continue to move our program forward and that we continue to look at everything we do with a constructive and critically constructive lens. So one such area has been in our science program and that transition between middle school and high school, specifically the science sequence, specifically how we look at acceleration. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Mrs. O'Shea, who will introduce the topic for this evening and the presentation this evening. Obviously, there will be some assistance. I see Mrs. Harowitz on this call. I also see Mr. DeGeneres on the call. And it is terrific to have them both with us this evening. Good evening. And Ms. O'Shea, I'll turn it over to you for the presentation on the secondary curriculum updates.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter. I do know that we have Mr. DeGeneres and Mrs. Harowitz here, and they have been part of this journey as we've explored these topics for the last several months. And just in ease of sharing the information, I did say that I would do the majority of the discussing of the content around the slides and that Mr. DeGeneres and Mrs. Harowitz would be available to, and feel free to certainly interject or to clarify anything that I might say. To the board, thank you so much for this opportunity to share some of our secondary curriculum updates. We wanted to share with you two items. We wanted to share with you that beginning in the 21-22 school year, we're looking to change the sequence for accelerated science, which begins in grade eight. And in addition, we wanted to share with you some considerations for possible new programming at YHS. That, can you change the slide, please? So as a board and the community at large, you have seen this presentation. Often, it's been a staple in present, you've seen the slide. It's been a staple in presentations over the past few years. And this 2020 vision really creates for us a clear path and a clear expectations for what we need to be thinking about when we think about our students, our curriculum and our programs, and what we value is important in our district. Next slide. To that end, another familiar slide. This slide reflects all of the areas that we view as important and valued. And we consider the experiences of our students in all of these areas as they go through their journey at YCSD.
What I'll share with you is that picture was taken before all the mask mandates were in place. You'll see some masks in the athletics and co-curricular presentation. But as I told you, kind of in many of our presentations, we will be referring to pictures that we've had in our archival database just so that we can really see the students who we're representing and working for.
And the slide certainly and this picture gave me a lot of joy. As wonderful as our students are and how much they're engaging in their learning this year with the mask mandate, they certainly look so beautiful here without the masks on. So I was happy to keep this picture included. But you're right, it's not really reflective of what's happening in the moment. Yvette's like the next slide, please. So as the board knows, we engage in a continuous review of our programs and offerings, and we make adjustments and additions as appropriate. For example, a few years ago, we shared with you that we were making a change to the accelerated math program. At that point, we had been identifying students for accelerated math prior to grade six, as early as grade five. And we recognized at that time that that really was not developmentally appropriate. We needed our students to have the opportunity to grow in their skill set and in their maturity. So we moved the start of the accelerated math program to grade seven to allow for greater access for students. In addition, over the last few years, we've added an eSteam program to the middle school as well as coding opportunities. And at our high school, we have added a Husker Discovery elective, an eSteam course, an app design course, an engineering sequence, media arts, and an AP English language course at the high school. We had already had an AP English literature, and we added the AP English language as well. As you know, we have co-curriculars at both our middle school and high school, and what we offer changes based on student interest and participation. And we really look to change and develop based on the needs and interests of our students. Next slide. So I know this is hard to see, and I apologize. This is a chart that is included within the YHS academic course catalog. It shows the current path for students in science, and it shows the start of life science for all students in seventh grade, and then two opportunities for science in grade eight. Those two opportunities include general eighth grade science for most students, which is a physical science. And for a small number of students who are accelerated, it's an honors earth science course. And this honors earth science is a high school region's class for accelerated students. And then, as you can see from this chart, hopefully, for those students after they leave earth science, they will then go to ninth grade and take biology, living environment. And the rest of the ninth grade would begin with earth science. You'll see in this chart that there's a clear path for chemistry and physics at different levels. And it also shows some of the electives offered by our high school social science teachers, and it includes forensics by marine biology and anatomy as some of the options. That next slide. So currently, for students eligible for acceleration, they'll begin in grade eight, and they would take the earth sciences we discussed, which is typically a high school class. The students ride the YHS buses in the morning, and they would attend to the high school first period at 7:30. And those classes are taught very, very well by our current high school teachers. Once that period ends, they walk back to the middle school and begin their day there. So this has been our practice, and we began to think about, is this the only path that we should consider for our students when we talk about accelerate acceleration in science? So we began to think about the benefits of offering biology and living environment as our accelerated class instead of earth science, and providing those classes within MESMS. Next slide. So right now, or as with many of our content areas, we're in a transition of transition phase to the new P-12 science standards. And we are in a vertical implementation phase, K-12, which is expected to be completed by the 24-25 school year, when the chemistry and physics regions exams will be reflected, reflective of the new standards. So as we are across K-12, we're really looking at unpacking these standards at the middle school and adjusting our curriculum accordingly. When you look at science in the middle school now, life science is taught to all as part of grade seven. So a natural next step to build on this knowledge that they are touching on in life science in seventh grade is to offer the living environment biology course for the accelerated students. With this immediate, with this jump, the teachers can jump right into an in-depth understanding of life science. They have, the students are coming to them with an immediate background knowledge that they gained in seven. So when they go to eight, they can jump right into an in-depth foundation of life science content. And in addition, without having to do a lot of review that they would have had to do or new teaching, they now have an opportunity to focus on helping students with higher level thinking skills, open unto questions, with case studies, designing their own experiments, all activities with which would enhance their critical thinking skills that are necessary for the higher level sciences. Next slide, please. So part of what we were also considering was the ease of which this could take place at the middle school. So the classes would take place in the middle school. We've taught by middle school teachers. We have two middle school teachers who are certified to teach this class and have taught this class successfully at Yorktown High School. Teachers and students would be in the same building and on the same schedule, which would make things a lot easier for students to access extra help during the day. Classes will be within the typical middle school instructional day. One of the problems we now run into is with with the students taking classes first period at the high school on days that they have labs at Yorktown High School because of the travel between buildings, they are arriving late for their middle school period two class. And this is disruptive to everyone. If we were to house these classes, as we are considering in the middle school, this would be, this problem would be eliminated. And in addition, our accelerated math program, grade eight, takes place in the middle school. And this would create a math and science accelerated program in a similar process housed in the middle school with the other middle school students and staff. Next slide. So now here's the new science sequence map, which I know is also equally hard to see. And it shows that the bio-living environment would be the eighth grade accelerated course, and then students moving to the ninth grade in the accelerated program would then take earth science in grade nine. Next slide. So we have historically had anywhere from two to four classes of accelerated science on any given cohort. Given the rollout of the regular standards that we are in right now, we are looking to identify students now for two classes of acceleration moving into next school year. The next steps would be Mrs. Harowitz would share information about this opportunity with parents. We will use a similar model. We'll use the star assessments. We will use the quarter grades for two and three, second and third quarter grades. And we would have a skill assessment and teacher feedback to help us determine eligibility for accelerated science starting next year. It's important to point out that if a student doesn't start on the accelerated path in the eighth grade for science, there is certainly an opportunity and students to do this. There's that opportunity for students to double up on sciences as they are in their high school career if they so desire to do so. Next slide. So in addition to planning our sequence for accelerated science, we've also had conversations around additional opportunities that can be part of our high school program based on what we see our students will need, what our students are interested in, and how we can further prepare them for life outside of the kindergarten through 12th grade experience at Yorktown. So some of what these considerations for electives that we're looking at, and I say considerations because at this point in time, we are actively working on some of this information and some of this planning, but we don't know exactly when or the very, these are topics. We have not defined an entire course around any of these topics at this point. So we're exploring at this point in time. When we think about data science, that's such a critical field. And it's a combination of computer science, math, business, and some of the topics that we may include in this type of a program or this type of a course would be statistics, analytics, programming, data visualization. But most importantly, how do you take large amounts of data and make some important decisions around what you are finding out? That's so critical in so many aspects of the business world right now. And that would be certainly something we would love to expose our students to in some type of a, an elective for that data science course. In addition, we are looking at something in the humanities, which is a bridge between our social studies and English curriculums. And although it's not fine tuned at this point, we are looking at an elective that would focus students on equity issues of the past and the present, provide some historical content around those issues and provide opportunities for independent research into issues of race, gender, and culture. So right now, again, not fully defined, but areas of interest on behalf of our staff as we move forward. We're also looking to build on an already very successful science research program by perhaps adding an element of science research for ninth grade as an expansion. So again, not fully defined yet, but certainly interested and moving forward to making some decisions around these possible electives for hopefully next year, either first semester, second semester, or for a full year elective at this point. So Mrs. Harowitz and Mr. DeGeneres, is there anything I missed before we asked the board if there are any questions?
No, you covered everything.
Okay.
Well, I'll just, what I'll just share, if I may, is by making this transition to bringing the accelerated program to the middle school, it makes obvious benefits, and it makes obvious sense for so many reasons, safety, convenience. It's a smart approach to constructing the program, but the added benefit are the opportunities that it creates for us at the high school level. The idea of being able to look at creating a formal feeder program to strengthening our science research program is really appealing. Data sciences is where the world is right now. That is as important of an opportunity that we can provide to our students. It's something I think that we're all really, really passionate about. And I think we understand the benefit that introducing our students to the data sciences will provide to them well beyond their time here in Yorktown. So this is a multifaceted approach that we're taking, and the benefits are not just to the middle school, but the high school reaps some benefits here with some staffing that we can repurpose to serve some of the other needs that we've identified without having material impact to our budget. So I share that with you, Lisa. Well done on the presentation, and certainly Ms. Harowitz and Mr. DeGeneres. Very well done in your planning because there was a lot of work that Mrs. O'Shea invested with the administrations of the buildings and with faculty in different roles. So Mrs. O'Shea, I thank you. Mr. DeGeneres, Ms. Harowitz, thank you for all the time and the effort. And having been part of many of those meetings, I truly do know how much time and effort you've all invested.
Are there any questions from the board?
Thank you, Lisa. This was pretty impressive. I understand the background behind it. Do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I have no questions. I just want to say I'm thrilled to see new course offerings for students at the middle school, at the high school. Really nice work by our principals, and I'm just happy to see it.
Yeah, thank you. So thank you, Mrs. O'Shea, for that presentation. And Mrs. Harowitz and Mr. DeGeneres, for all the hard work that went into this. I wanted to ask a little bit about that humanities elective that you were thinking about putting together. Who's, who's developing that? You know, who's involved in it? Who's it going to be offered to? Is it high school, middle school, a combination? Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Mr. DeGeneres, if you don't mind, I can start, and then you can jump in if you'd like, or do you want to start?
I'm happy to start. Thanks, Mrs. O'Shea, and appreciate the question. And hello, good evening, Board of Education. Yeah, it's something that we talked about. We are certainly pursuing it at the high school. Most recently, I surveyed our Hudson Valley Principals Group and looked for existing courses and who's developing. So we're in the really the planning stages of it right now. Clearly, we feel we have a need. We know we have a need. And it's a course that our faculty and our students have asked for. So again, it's really in the planning stages. We're doing some work with the committee on the building and also clearly district office administrators as well. And I look forward actually at some point, put together proposal to come to the board and really introduce it to you at some point.
Cheryl, did you have anything?
Yes, I had a question about the science, the life science program. I know some districts accelerate all eighth grade students into the life science program. Have we ever considered doing that? Or would we?
Mrs. Harowitz, are you able to answer to take that question, or would you want me to start?
Good evening, everyone. I did a survey of several districts and of about 15 districts that I surveyed. Only one district was doing the two-year program. The other two, the other districts had living environment as their accelerated program. It's such a heavy reading program, critical thinking skills, that we thought at this time it's best to start it as the accelerated class in the middle school.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add to that, at the start of this journey, earlier in the school year, Mrs. Harowitz and I met with some of the science coordinators, regional science coordinators through Putnam, Northern Westchester Bowses, to talk about, you know, where in the region are we going with acceleration for all in science in eighth grade? And it was very clear to us after that meeting that with the new science standards being so rigorous, that that really wasn't something that districts were moving to. And in thinking about the quality of our eighth grade core science class right now, that gives such a good background for students to be successful in the sciences they're going to experience in high school. So it didn't make sense to us to want to pursue that further at this time.
Thank you.
Will anything change with the eligibility criteria for the accelerated science? And are there going to be any, of course, increased costs to that or the new courses that you're talking about?
So if I, if I heard you correctly, Jackie, you were asking if there was a change to the acceleration process. Right now, we're continuing in this very similar matrix that we've used in the past with our star assessments, our quarter grades, our teacher recommendation. And there is a skills assessment that has been given in the past and will be given again. However, the skills assessment portion of the, of this will be adapted or modified a little bit more, including some problem solving, some math skills, and, you know, some topics appropriate to the content.
And increase cost?
So there, there would be real no, no, I don't want to say no, because Tom is listening. There will be minimal costs in terms of the science at changing the science sequence at the middle school. We're not looking to increase our FTE of teachers. We can do this within our existing teachers in the middle school. Because the middle school is already set up with lab equipment, there's no need. And we have microscopes for biology. There shouldn't be any real significant costs to setting up the lab. We would have some costs related to curriculum development and design, which we would be doing in the summer. And that's not something we have not planned for across the board with many of our content areas. We do keep money in the budget for curriculum planning. So I don't see a big cost there. As we continue to develop the possible electives in the high school, because those are new classes for us that would require additional time and planning and preparation and developing curriculum. So that might have a little bit of a higher costs. I don't anticipate at this point that we would have any real FTE needs. I believe, and if I'm wrong, Joe, correct me, that if we were to do this, we would be able to offer these classes within our existing FTE in the high school, our existing teaching staff in the high school, full-time teachers.
Does anybody have any other questions?
I just, I think this is great. I think moving forward and changing and growing is important. And I'm very, I'm very excited for the data science in the high school. I think that's going to be great. And that's just where everything is. So that's wonderful. So thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. We're going to ask our, our guests to the meeting to remain with us because the next presentation, if it's okay for me to proceed to the second presentation this evening, the second presentation is the second installment of our series of budget presentations. If you recall at the last meeting, I gave a general overview of the budget. And now we'll delve into a series of departmental and programmatic budget presentations. All are really, really important in creating the broader picture of the school district's budget. So the first presentation this evening is for athletics and co-curricular activities. We have joining us, obviously, Mr. Cole will be delivering the presentation. But joining us is our athletic director, Mr. Barrett, high school principal, Mr. DeGeneres, middle school principal, Mrs. Harowitz. I see our district treasurer, Alicia Sigmarson, on the call as well. And I know that we have some from the middle school as well on the call as well. And I see Mr. Rosen here and Mr. Shilin, Dr. McGinnis, Mr. Lees also on the call as well. So with this presentation, Mr. Cole will highlight the 2021-2022 proposed budget with regard as it relates to athletics and co-curriculars. So at this point, Mr. Cole, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter, and good evening, everyone. Tonight's presentation of athletics and the co-curricular budgets, as Dr. Hatter said, is the second in a series of seven budget presentations. This process will culminate on March 22nd with the presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget to the Board of Education. There will be two more sessions in addition to this series of seven. The budget adoption and budget hearing, a total of nine sessions where the public can weigh in on the proposed budget before the budget vote on the 18th of May. Next slide, please, Yvette. We're going to begin tonight's presentation with the budget for athletics. Next slide, please. The Director of Athletics has 74 employees under his umbrella of responsibility. The Director also has supervisory responsibilities regarding the physical education teachers throughout the school district, K through 12. The department includes the Director, an Administrative Assistant, a full-time trainer, and 72 coaches that cover all three high school seasons. Next slide, please. Here are the projections for participation in the 2021-2022 school year. The number of teams and coaches are being planned in anticipation of a more standard school year. The current year athletic seasons have been modified to accommodate the COVID protocols established by New York State. This presentation will focus on the traditional three-season model. Next slide, please. Here's a breakdown of each sport by season. It ties in directly to the preceding chart. Note that not every sport has three levels, freshman, junior varsity, and varsity. In fact, most In fact, most sports are limited to just two levels of junior varsity and varsity. Next slide, please. Here's the summary snapshot chart of the fall, of the fall sports season. The last column represents the cost of transportation, which after coaching salaries is the largest element of cost in the athletics budget. Some of the budgeted costs, including transportation, attempt to capture estimated costs related to postseason competition as well. As you might imagine, the difficult item to anticipate in any given year. Next slide, please. Here's that same and similar chart for our winter sports season. Three teams, the boys' ice hockey team, boys' swim and dive team, and the gymnastics team have been combined with teams from neighboring districts due to decreased participation or derived deficiencies. Next slide, please. The spring season snapshot with anticipated participation. Next slide, please. This chart is the summary of some of the Scholar-Athlete Awards for individuals and teams and the Individual Athlete Recognition Awards. We're extremely proud of the 486 of our Scholar-Athletes and 23 varsity teams that have been recognized for Scholar-Athlete status. Next slide, please. This is a summary of the proposed budget for athletics by line item. The budget is relatively unchanged from the prior year, a trend you will see throughout the 2021-2022 budget presentations. In total, the athletics budget is estimated to decrease by approximately $1,395 or 1/10 of 1% from the prior year budget. Next slide, please. We will now advance to talk a bit about co-curricular activities in the high school and the middle school. Next slide, please. Here's a summary of the various clubs offered to students in the high school. In total, more than 1,100 students participate in these clubs. Students can and often do participate in more than one club. So the number of 1,100 does not represent unique students, just the total participation. Clubs that are new offerings are indicated with asterisks on the chart. When new clubs are proposed, they run without compensation to the teacher advisor. No new clubs were introduced in the 2020-2021 school year as the pandemic and related restrictive protocols dampened participation. Some items of note, class advisors and class coordinators represent the entire population of each grade level. They coordinate the various activities of the grade level as a whole. As so, as such, no participation numbers are listed for them. Next slide, please. Here is the same chart for the middle school. Total participation in grades six through eight is roughly 700 students. New clubs again would be labeled here. However, new clubs are not piloted here as they are in the high school. The supervisory dollars paid to teachers are reassigned each year to the clubs that are active. Next slide, please. Each budget season, we provide a list of new clubs running in the high school as of the current school year. As mentioned previously, new clubs are run on a pilot basis with those stipends attached to them. If participation warrants, they may run as a permanent club in subsequent years, but without increasing the overall amount of money spent on all of the clubs. Next chart, please. This chart reflects clubs that were active in the previous year but will not be running in the 2021-2022 school year. Next chart, please. Here are the line item costs for co-curricular. In total, we project a $10,000 decrease or a reduction of roughly 4%. The super and advanced placement line declines just over $4,200 as one-time required training for the World Languages Curriculum will be completed by the end of the 2020-21 school year. Arts and education money, another line item in the instructional portion of this budget, is used to supplement the performing arts. Hence, the reduction here to the performing arts line. $4,000 from that same line item has been reassigned to equipment purchases. Next slide, please, Yvette. So this satisfies the second of the budget presentations. On February 8th, we will present debt service costs and transportation costs. We thank you for listening to our presentation. We'll be more than happy to take your questions. Representatives from athletics, the middle school and high school are on hand to provide context and answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. So starts another budget season. Mike, did you have questions? You're on mute. There you go.
I know, I had to find my unmute. Thank you. What are we looking at? Questions on the budget presentation?
Yes.
I guess, um, I mean, I've seen the numbers and understand the vast majority of it. And I, we're assuming that there's going to be athletics as we've known them in previous years. So I guess one of the questions I would have is what do we anticipate we would need equipment money for and things like that going forward?
I'm going to let Rob Barrett answer that question. It's a good question. We did some pre-purchasing this year with as much money as we could for athletics in anticipation of programmatic needs, but I'll let him expand on it further.
Sorry. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. So right now, I haven't put anything into our equipment budget for this year because I didn't anticipate. We're in a really good spot in terms of our equipment. Our gym is being redone through the bond process, which helps us in that area. So I didn't anticipate too many things that we couldn't handle going forward based on what we've done over the past four years and what was done prior to me. So I think we're in a good place in regards to equipment.
Okay, great.
Rachel, did you have a question?
Yeah, Tom, could you explain the $10,000 going down in the performing arts? It was, I think, the last slide or last two. Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Sure, the, um, we have a line item that will, we will be reviewed as part of the instructional portion of the budget for arts and education. It's a Bowsies line that is funded with about $40,000 for across the school district. That line item is being used in the last several years to supplement the performing arts programs at the high school. So we haven't been expending the entire budget. So we're reducing the budget by $10,000 to reflect in part the fact that arts and education does, money does subsidize the program. And in addition to the fact that $4,000 of that line item has been split out to the equipment line. So that items such as speakers and microphones and lighting and things like that can be purchased out of the equipment line that qualify as equipment.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa?
Thanks, and thanks, Tom, for that presentation. I have a question about the activities at both the high school and the middle school. Since, you know, kids are remote, there's some kids that are hybrid. How are we seeing their participation level this year with that? And how are we handling getting them to participate even though they're not in school?
Mr. Shilin, do you want to handle that from the middle school's perspective first?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. As far as the attendance has been recorded this year, it's, it's been surprisingly very well. We've had a lot of students that are logging on when they get home or if they're at home already. A lot of the after-school activities are commencing around 3 o'clock when the students do get home. So surprisingly, the attendance, I can only think of one in particular, are budding chefs. The students have the ability to really be in their own kitchens and to prepare food as Mrs. Epstein and Mrs. Gannon are instructing them on the particular lesson for that day. So in that case, the attendance has been very good. And it has suffered a little bit, being in the hybrid model. But overall, it's, it's been better than I had projected when we started this year. And as far as getting the word out for the activities that are currently being facilitated this year, we've had many announcements. The teachers have reached out to other students when they're in school.
Thank you.
Mr. DeGeneres, do you want to weigh in?
Sure, very similar to what Mr. Shilin shared. For us, knowing that we couldn't have our ninth graders being new to the building and having our club recruitment. We traditionally have, what we ended up doing this year is creating videos that our student leaders provided for the ninth graders to recruit them. So the numbers have been pretty consistent. I think because of the times that we're living in, kids do want to be involved and do want to still be connected. It's just very different virtually. But for the most part, the numbers are good. The contact times might not be as much, and some of the, some of the outreach programs that they do certainly are not what they were. But that's where we are right now. So we're pretty happy with the numbers. We're running the clubs. We want to keep kids connected and involved to their high school programs. And again, different creative, but some different creates other opportunities to accomplish the same goals. So we're still doing some, many of those things.
Thank you.
Pete?
Nice presentation, Tom. With, with regards with the new transportation company, Tom, do you, with the amount that was budgeted this year, was that, I see it's equal to last year, but is that, is there an increase there or will it affect our transportation in any way with a new company?
That's a good question. We do have a new provider. But the new provider has taken over the contract with all the original variables for athletics. So the, the services provided and the cost provided for those services remains unchanged. So the thing that is difficult and the athletic director may want to weigh in here, the thing that's difficult is trying to capture what those costs are for an extended season, which isn't go on in the post, which teams go on in the postseason and so forth. But for the most part, the transportation costs will remain unchanged even as compared to the 2019-2020 school year.
If I could just dive in there to support what Tom was talking about. Any given year, you know, obviously, I hope that all of our teams do well and go as far into the postseason as possible. That's the goal. So that unfortunately doesn't happen every year. And you certainly don't know where you'll be seeded. You know, in years that you're seeded a very high seed, you won't travel much in your sectional games. But certainly, if you go past those sectional games, you'll be traveling maybe throughout the state. So that's where those costs are a little difficult to kind of figure out because you don't know which teams will be good and you don't know where you'll be traveling depending on the sport and where the finals might be and those types of things.
Cheryl?
Yeah, thank you, Tom, for your presentation. I do have a question regarding athletics. I know over the past few years, it had been requested that we provide some support for positions of assistant coaches to assist with supervision. Is that process complete or do we continue to look to fill those positions at this point?
So for, for this budget this year, I've asked for two assistant coaches, one for our girls' basketball program and one for our boys', girls', boys' basketball program, both varsity positions. At that point, yeah, I do anticipate that we will not need any more assistance for our varsity sports. I think we're in a very good place. Obviously, I can't say never based on growth, things happening in terms of our numbers growing for some of our bigger sports. But I don't anticipate that happening at this point. And I think at that point, our coaches will, our teams will be really what sort of looking for solid in terms of coaching, teaching, supervision, all the things that come along with having assistant coaches.
I, my, it's my understanding that this current year, you've been using some sort of an app to help facilitate physical education for remote students. Is that something that's going to continue next year or is it, is it in the budget? Is it not in the budget for next year? How is that working?
So currently, it is not in the budget. And a little bit of the issue is obviously this was something that we looked into because of the circumstances that we were in. However, the success of the app and the, and everything that it brings has left us in a little bit of dilemma whether or not we want to go forward with it. I've been talking with our phys ed staff. They say it's a game changer. It enables our fitness units to be enhanced. It reaches kids of all different varying abilities. It allows for kids that might be on medical, you know, off, off campus for, for whatever reason or even on campus because of injury and such, and enables them to kind of track what they're doing, engage them, you know, on fitness and nutrition and mobility and things that they might be able to get out of that time. So it's been a game changer according to the PE staff. You know, the, the nice piece about it is that they can kind of message kids. They can see what they've been doing. They can see how long, you know, they've been on, what they've read, what they've looked at. They can comment on those things. So it's really been a nice addition. You know, something that positive out of the circumstances that we're in. So I would love to keep it and give it another, another year to see if we continue to like it. The, the additional piece to that is kids that use it, if they're athletes, now their coaches could also jump in and track them athletically in terms of lifting and fitness and, and the stuff that they're doing on a daily basis in the weight room. So that's just another added extra bonus to the app. But overall, it's been a very good experience. The kids seem to like it. And they seem to be growing. Even our, our students who have, you know, a beginner level, fitness level have been engaged. And, and, and I guess the word is gotten stronger or certainly learned about fitness in a positive way.
So is it included or is it not included for next year?
It is not in our budget right now, no.
And what's the cost of it that it's not in the budget?
It is, well, that, that's, that's another piece. But overall, if we, if we're able to utilize the way that we're using it this year, it's about, it's a little under $2,700. If it's, if we aren't utilizing it the way that we're utilizing it this year, it reduces in price determined by the number of students that are using it.
Wait, did you freeze on us?
Did I freeze on you? Am I there?
Yeah, I think you froze on us.
Oh. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we got, I got to the part where you were, it decreases if we don't use it the same way.
Right. If we have numbers, so for instance, if we just used it for students who were injured or couldn't participate in PE for one reason or another, and say we used a couple of hundred students, it would reduce drastically in price. So although right now the PE staff would love to utilize it the way that it is and see if it continues to be a positive thing going forward.
All right, thank you. Do anybody else have any other questions? This was great. Thank you so much for your help and your guidance today. Round one is done. Ron, you want to take it back?
That would be perfect. Thank you all. Rob, Tom, Marie and Joe, I appreciate you taking the time to walk us through. That was a very clear and concise overview of athletics and co-curriculars. I appreciate you being here. With regard to the remainder of my report, I just want to share some good news items, some updates, some important information that I think our school community should be aware of. So the first is just congratulatory in nature. I just want to congratulate one of our eighth grade students, Amani Gupta, for her outstanding finish in the American Mathematics Competition Eight. It's referred to as the AMC Eight. And it's absolutely dynamite. So in addition to this first place certificate that Amani received, she also was recognized as um an honor roll student and with so many students across the country participating in this to achieve at such a high level is really remarkable. And just something that we're so proud of and and I called Amani to congratulate her and her family. What a wonderful, wonderful accomplishment for her and and certainly uh representing our district. There was a meeting that um that we had had with Senator Harkam. Mr. DeGeneres, Mr. Barrett was were part of it. We had students, their parents and and some of our coaches part of it. And I was just so proud to see the students advocating for themselves in such an authentic way. And interestingly, the conversation topic on my calendar invite read athletics discussion with Senator Harkam. I will tell you athletics really didn't come up in the conversation. This was an opportunity for students to talk about their mental health, their mental well-being, the emotional toll that the pandemic has taken on them. And it it's not limited or unique to athletics. I think our students in the fine and performing arts have experienced similar difficulties and similar struggles in navigating a junior and senior year that has been anything but typical. I was so proud of our students to talk about and and to really talk with such candor and and such transparency about the effects that um the pandemic has had on their high school experience, certainly not unique to the students of Yorktown. But the advocacy and focus on academic health, mental health, emotional well-being was really inspiring and and I support our students participating in athletics. I think we can do this safely. I think our medical director has vetted the plans that our athletic director has has developed and I'm confident in the protocols and procedures we have in place. The proof is in a very successful fall season that we had. The proof is in some of the fine and performing arts that we've done and those have been to date a little uh more on the virtual side. But I I am confident in the protocols that we can put in place. So our students, this is not for me, this is not about athletics and this is not about an athletic season. This is about giving our students um an opportunity to have something that further connects them to their school and something that further connects them to what all that they aspired to during their high school career and um athletics is the vehicle in this instance. But it's the fine and performing arts. It's our students on the stages. It's our band concert performers. It's our dance company and and all of the opportunities that we discussed during this evening's co-curricular portion of the presentation. So that was, I I thank Senator Harkam for his time. It was wonderful for him to take an hour out of a a really busy week to meet with us and to meet with our students and hear our students. And at this point, we're awaiting guidance from the local health department to determine if, in fact, they will authorize a an athletic season for the remainder of the year. Specifically with regard to high-risk sports. And just a clarification, as we talk about the phys ed project, the the gymnasium project, which is more than a phys ed space, it's more than an athletic space, it's more than a fine and performing art space, it's more than a testing location, it's a hub of a school. And I just want to clarify that the the money is being used for that renovation or through our capital reserve and and they're not being bonded. So it's a capital reserve project that the board authorized at their last meeting. So we're eagerly anticipating that um renovation to happen. Some other updates that I would like to share are with regard to quarantines. I've received a couple of questions. Uh, one or two questions about the new Westchester County Department of Health Quarantines. I've received some questions with regard to the plan for the remainder of the school year and will vaccinations impact the trajectory of the school year? So I just want to speak to that uh for a moment. With regard to quarantines, the Department of Health on January fourth issued a revised memo to the field, specifically to school superintendents that provided us a little more detail and and discernment for the quarantines that happened in school previously. If students were on a school bus, the students could have been more than thirty five feet apart with someone in the front of the bus and someone in the rear of the bus. We were required to quarantine the entire bus. The student could have spent two minutes on the bus, been thirty five feet away from the individual who tested positive and they'd be required to quarantine subsequent to the January fourth memo, the guidance is that you have to be within six feet for ten or more minutes. Of course, there regardless of whether you're masked or not, regardless of whether there are barriers in place or not, if you're within six feet for ten or more minutes, you're required to quarantine. And so our medical director has reviewed the memo from the Department of Health. And that is the protocol that we have been following and we will continue to follow until the Department of Health amends the guidance that they are offering to the field at this point. We're following the current guidance and will continue to follow the current guidance. With regard to quarantines for classrooms, first of all, I I do want to share, we have fewer high school students in the building. We have about forty four percent who are learning remotely full-time and that's creating some other opportunities for us that we're going to be sharing with the school community in in the coming days and the coming week. But with regard to at the high school level, classes generally have fewer students in them. There's there's greater space between students. So if we do have a positive case that emerges, the likelihood of someone sitting within six feet of the individual is low. So that's why we're also noticing the quarantine, but also with forty four percent of the student body learning remotely, if there is a student who is fully remote who tests positive, there are no implications on the schools because the individual has not been around buildings in in some cases all year. They have not been around school. They've been learning remotely all year. But we do report those in the spirit of transparency. We are sharing those with our school community. So you may have noticed that cases seem to be increasing. However, quarantines are not increasing as well. It's a function of of two things. It's a function of updated guidance from the Department of Health that regulates how quarantines are issued. And and it's important to note that the school district doesn't issue a quarantine. We don't have the authority to issue a quarantine. The Department of Health issues the quarantine. We act on their behalf. We facilitate that process. So we're following the quarantining authority uh and and the guidance that they provide to us. But also with at the high school level, as I mentioned, forty four student percent of the students are remote. So just inherently, the number of quarantines will be lower. At the middle school level, we have about twenty five percent or so that are remote, seventy five percent are hybrid. At the elementary level, eighty three percent of the children learn in the hybrid model. And only seventeen percent are fully remote. So the vast majority of elementary school students are attending in person in some capacity. So that that's some information on quarantines. The duration of quarantines also have been reduced from fourteen days to ten days in accordance with CDC guidelines. There are travel quarantines that are also in place. All of this information is posted to our website. It's posted to our nurses' site. Uh, I also included a link to the quarantine information in the health alert I sent out today. So you'll note that there were seven um positive cases within the district. However, some of those students have not been in our building in in weeks. And and in some instances, months. So I I just want to share that as well, just to balance the news that I shared because I do understand that seven COVID cases in a district that has thirty four hundred students and six hundred employees, four thousand people, seven in a single day can can raise some alarms and raise some concern. But of those seven positive cases, actually, most of those individuals hadn't been in school during their infectious period. With regard to where are we going now that there's a vaccination out, will that change? How often students can be in school? Will that change the number of days of in-person learning that that students um will have between now and the end of the year? The what I'll share with the board and with our school community is that the most limiting factor is the six feet of space that we have to have between the desks. It's a Department of Health guideline. We adhere to all of the Department of Health guidelines. And certainly our medical director has um endorsed that specific guideline. The the classrooms are only so big. We've removed furniture. We've removed cubbies. We've removed so many different um tables and chairs and rugs from our classrooms to maximize the number of desks that can fit in the room. But the reality is when there's a six-foot radius around um a desk, we're really limited as to how many desks can fit into a given classroom. So I share that with the with our board, with our school community that the most limiting factor is the space between the desks. Perhaps as the vaccination becomes more widespread, the Department of Health determines that it would be a prudent course to relax that separation uh guideline that they've put out to school districts. That certainly would position us to welcome more students back to in-person learning. We have taken some steps as as space has become available to welcome back um many of our special education students who are in special programs, who are in smaller and special programs. We're continuing that effort as more space becomes available. We have an open survey that ended uh at noon today. So that's eight hours ago, that survey ended where parents could elect if they'd like their child to continue in the current model or switch from hybrid to remote, remote to hybrid. And uh, that's helpful to us in helping us to navigate how much space we'll have left now that people have generally made a decision as to what the instructional model will be. Of course, we allow for flexibility. That helps us to understand, okay, can we welcome more students back in the high school? Can we welcome more students back in the middle school and and so on and so forth? So that information is is crucial to us and and to our planning. But with regard to just increasing physically the number of people we can put in the classroom, we are limited by the six-foot distance requirement. So I share that with you. At at this point, we're continuing with our hybrid model. We're continuing with our fully remote model. How things will look for next year, I I don't think we're in a position to address that at this point because it's just so early to tell. Will remote learning be permissible? Will hybrid be a requirement of school districts? There are so many unanswered questions at this point. But that's just a general update. I did want to address with the board and with our community, the quarantine updates, some information about where we are with regard to welcoming more students back and and how our planning is coming. And the planning is coming along and we have been able to welcome some additional students back to five-day-a-week in-person learning and and we're continuing to explore bringing additional students back to the greatest extent possible because I promise you, no one wants the kids back more than I do every day. I want them all back and I want them back every day. And that's the goal. That's what we're working toward. But there are some limitations that we have from space. Even Dr. Siversky's study confirmed that our building utilization rates are between eighty and ninety percent. So I share that with you and um I appreciate the opportunity to provide you an update. That's where we are. So it was the budget, there was the curriculum presentation, there's this update on quarantines, COVID in our direction for the spring semester. I'm happy to answer your questions on any of the three that the board may have. Uh, but otherwise I I thank you for the time.
Can I just um, I just want to be clear because we we hear this um from from people at times. The fact that some districts have been able to put more students in back in the building full-time than we have has to do with this, the the building utilization amounts that we have. Other districts may not be hamstrung by the same eighty percent capacity, ninety percent capacity our buildings are already at. Is that correct?
Yeah, at this point, I'm aware of a handful of school districts in in our region in Westchester. When I say our region, I'm I'm aware of a handful that have been able to welcome back some grade levels, specifically at the elementary level, all students every day. The vast majority of school districts are in a hybrid model. And again, it's a function of space and staff. That that's been what I've shared with our community since August when we announced our reopening plan and that continues to be the limitation that we have. It's space and it's staffing. And yes, uh, some districts do have more space than other school districts. Some districts have more staff than other school districts. So uh, with regard to the districts that do have students attending at the elementary level daily, a lot of it is a function of the space and the staff.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any other questions go on on the presentation? Okay, we'll go to the other parts of the agenda then. Thank you. Uh, we're going to go to board report. Port will start with audit regimen.
All right, so uh, we are trying to finalize the um area of intensive review for this year with our internal auditors. So more to come on that in the next meeting.
Fiscal, Mike?
Yeah, thanks, Jackie. Um, so the fiscal advisory committee actually met this morning bright and early. Um, we had a couple of items to discuss. Um, number one was the fact that we were recently able to refinance uh some of our debt and uh S and P has affirmed our double A plus rating, which is outstanding. And our debt, uh, the rate we were able to get on our debt was uh point two six percent or twenty six basis points, which is a historic low uh for school districts. Uh, and one of the reasons that we were able to accomplish that uh that S and P specifically referenced was districts management and their ability to deal with unexpected uh occurrences or um expenses as well as a strong working relationship between the administration and the school board and that we have consistently uh made forward projecting decisions. So we're always looking forward, not just worried about the one-year uh decisions, uh, which brings us to the second part of our conversation, which revolved around what is going on with budgets for this year and in coming years. Specifically, we received some additional information from the governor's office as far as their projections on uh what they are assuming will be additional aid from the federal government uh and how they would handle that. Although uh more concerning to us was some changes that are looking or are being made at the state level. The two biggest is uh they are looking to now uh essentially lump all of the various aid categories that we currently receive and manage the reimbursement on into one category called services aid. Uh, and that is problematic in the sense that it lacks transparency and we don't get to see exactly what's in each of those categories anymore. The second issue is uh some potential cuts that they're looking at for star aid, uh, which will need to be replicated out of our budget uh going forward. So we are fairly confident that this year will manage okay as far as our budget goes. Uh, as is typical with a lot of government solutions, uh, there will be a lot of money initially upfront to help us get through the current crisis. Uh, but what that will do is provide uh multiple years of problems on the back end where we're constantly chasing how to make up some of the gaps. So uh, we'll have more once we get a better idea of exactly what the numbers look like. Right now, it's just a whole bunch of guestimates for the most part, uh, but as things start to uh materialize and crystallize, we'll be back in touch with some recommendations uh to this board and uh some action plans that the public can be aware of.
Thank you. Policies, Cheryl?
Sure. Um, the policy committee last met uh last week on January twenty first. We were able to review eleven policies and regulations. Four of those policies or regulations are up for deletion tonight because they're either irrelevant or no no longer necessary. Uh, we have four amended or reviewed policies to be read tonight by the board. And um, we'll next be meeting on February eleventh.
Thank you. And then for steering, um, as was already mentioned, the board approved the um the project for the summer for this um for the gym. So steering is already meeting um with the contractors. They're getting together to make sure the insurances are all in place and start ordering long lead items. Our structure manager likes to make sure everything is in place before we start tearing things apart. We also met regarding the um five-year building conditions um survey that has to go out um as a mandate from the state. And so um, we're in the process, the work has been done. We're in the process of reviewing that and seeing where our next steps are with that. So that's where steering stands. Anybody have any questions on any of that? Got a board action items?
Jackie, before, I'm sorry, may I just interject? I neglected to thanks Mr. Shilin for his participation in the presentation. I know he worked so hard to craft the presentation. So I just want to acknowledge and thank not only Mrs. Harwitz and Mr. DeGeneres, but I just I'm sitting here with it and and I need an opportunity to jump in with it. I just want to acknowledge Mr. Shilin and thank him for his participation. So I just want to acknowledge Mr. Shiland and thank him for his participation and presentation.
We always appreciate his input into co-curriculars, he's always great with that. All right, so board action items. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the December twenty-first and the January eleventh meetings?
So moved.
All those in favor? Can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for December two thousand and twenty?
So moved.
All those in favor? Motion to approve the claims audit report for December two thousand and twenty?
So moved.
Those in favor? A motion to approve the extra classroom activity report for December two thousand and twenty?
So moved.
All those in favor? Policies, be resolved that the following policies and regulations be deleted from the policy manual because they are obsolete and unnecessary. Eighty-four fourteen, school bus safety, eighty-four fourteen, our school bus safety regulation, eighty-four fourteen point one, bus driver qualifications and training, eighty-four fourteen point one, regulation for the bus driver qualifications and training.
So moved.
All those in favor? We have first read on the following policies. We have eighty-three forty, vehicle use and driver's safety, eighty-four thirteen, transportation for non-public school students, eighty-four fourteen point five, alcohol and drug testing of safety-sensitive employees program, and eighty-four seventeen, student transportation in private vehicles. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any of those policies? No, okay. Thank you. Personnel resolutions. Do I have to read all these? No, I didn't think so. So can I have a motion to approve the resolutions A through G listed below? All those in favor? Personnel, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion of the following be approved under certified personnel. We have regular substitute appointment, we have other compensation of extra duty, additions to the substitute list, a few corrections, and five resignations for the purpose of retirement under appointments for civil service. Classified personnel, we have appointments for civil service, additions to the substitute list and resignations for the purpose of retirement.
So moved.
The discussion, Ron, do you want to say anything?
I do, it's always bittersweet to acknowledge the retirements in the district. Here, we have five individuals who have a combined ninety-one years of service to our school district. And they have just been giants in the field and they have done some wonderful things for our students over the years that they have been with us. So it's bittersweet, I'm happy for our retirees on one hand. I'm sad for us because we are losing some really outstanding, outstanding professionals in this group.
Thank you, all those in favor? Business office, a motion to approve the contract with Silent G Productions for the provision of dance lighting services for the Yorktown High School Dance Company production in the Yorktown High School auditorium in the amount of fifty, five thousand three hundred and fifty hours term of service from January, February twenty twenty-one. All those in favor? A motion to approve the contract with the NYSSA rapid responder implementation in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and forty dollars annually.
So moved.
All those in favor? Motion increase the date plate and agreement originally approved on the January eleventh meeting by fourteen hundred dollars for a new contract total of seventy-two thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. This agreement approved was for the addition of the forty-eight-foot section of bleachers with the ADA ramp.
So moved.
All those in favor? Be resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby declares the attached list of equipment items as surplus and recommends its sale and or disposal. All those in favor? Budget transfers, a motion to approve the budget transfers as listed below? All those in favor? Resolve upon recommendation of superintendent, the Board of Education approves the amendment to the consulting agreement with the Lopez Consulting Group for the twenty twenty-one school year. All those in favor? Special ed, a motion to approve the following placements as of July, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one? All those in favor? Contract, a motion to approve the following contract, Mayapack Central School District contract for outer district placement for the twenty twenty-one school year at a cost not to exceed fifty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars for tuition-related services per student as mandated by an IEP. All those in favor? Gift grants and donations, a motion to approve the following gift grants and donations with gratitude at Yorktown High School, sixteen dollars for Black Bond Giving Fund, Your Cause Employee Match Program, five hundred dollars from the ExxonMobil's Corporate Education Alliance Program, and to the district, forty cloth-based masks from masks dot com. All those in favor? We're up to our final public comment. Yvette, was there anybody who wished to speak at this public comment?
I received three questions from parent Alexandra Sullivan. First question is, is there any plan to increase instructional days this year for the K-five grades? Second question, is there a plan for next year? Third question, does the rollout of the vaccine affect our ability to get all the kids in the building? That's it.
Thank you, Ron, do you want to take those?
Yes, absolutely. So first question, increase instructional days, K-five, Yvette? If I heard that correctly, is there any plan to increase instructional days this year for students in K-five? At this point, and I mentioned this a little earlier in my remarks, the most, the most limiting factor here is a six-feet-of-space requirement that the Department of Health has issued. So we have limited unused space in our schools. The, the space that's available is so limited. Should that six-foot of guidance of separation between desks be relaxed at some point? That would certainly open up additional opportunities for us. The results from the survey that concluded today will be looking at that data as well to determine if there are any opportunities there. I didn't see much of a change with regard to the models in terms of people wanting you to hybrid or remote at the elementary level. We did see an uptick at the high school level and students selecting the remote model. So as of right now, with eighty-three percent of our K-five students opting for hybrid instruction with the six-foot distance between desks in place, I don't anticipate us having the opportunity to return additional students without something changing. And specifically, the guidance between the desks, spacing between the desks. The capacity study also, that's another piece of it. I believe it's also posted to our website, Dr. Saversky's study from two thousand nineteen that spoke to the capacity in our buildings. We're in a very unique position in that eighty to ninety percent of our rooms are occupied and the room utilization rate is upwards of ninety percent at this point. So when you look at that and then you couple in the space that we have to, and we've taken all the steps. We've removed the furniture, we've done so many of those, I think, creative suggestions to try to get more desks into a classroom. But with six feet between desks, there's still a limit there. Question, Yvette, I think I heard, is there a plan for next year? So at this point, my hope would be that we have all of our students back, even if they have to be masked in the class. My hope is that we have every student back. Now, can I speak to September at this point? I think it's a little too early on January twenty-fifth to forecast how September will look in the school district. I can tell you what we're going to be working toward, which is bringing all students back. And if we are in a hybrid model, just like the hybrid model this year looks different than the remote model did last year, I'm confident the remote model and hybrid model, if those are still something that the district is required to offer, I'm confident that they'll look a little different. We'll take what we've learned this year and incorporate that into our planning for the coming year. So in terms of how September will look, I want all the students back, every one of them, even if masks are the requirement. But it is a little early on this date to forecast September. And then finally, the vaccine, Yvette, I heard something about the vaccine. Does that affect our ability to return students? We're still a ways away from vaccinating our school population. So students are not eligible for the vaccine, anyone sixteen and over is eligible for the vaccine. So the vast majority of our in-person students would not have taken the vaccine. But at this point, even with education staff being eligible, I think it's well documented that there's difficulty obtaining an appointment to become vaccinated. So that's something that certainly, I hope loosens up and opens up where anyone who wants a vaccination is able to get a vaccination. We're quite far away from the point where we have a critical mass of our faculty and staff vaccinated. So I, I, I don't have specific numbers that I can provide as to what percentage of our faculty and staff are vaccinated. But I would venture a guess that it's somewhere below or at about, at about ten percent. So I'm not quite sure where we are in that regard. But, but that's not going, I don't think the vaccine will have an impact on the immediate future for us. Because it also is two doses, twenty-eight days apart. So whenever you're able to schedule that first dose, it's twenty-eight days after that. And then it's another two weeks for the immunity to kick in based on the conversations I've had with our medical director. So those are, at least, I'm not sure if there's anything that you'd like to add, but those are, that's the information as I have it.
I think you covered everything, Dr. Hatter.
I think you've been very clear, this entire administration is very clear, is the goal is to get all the kids back all the time, but to do it safely. And we're not always the final say in whether they come back because the medical director and the Department of Health gives us the instructions of what we can and can't do. Is that correct, Dr. Hatter?
That is absolutely correct.
All right. But the goal, we always say, is to get them all back as soon as possible, safely. All right. That was the only public comment, Yvette?
Yes, that was it.
All right, so we're up to board comment. Mike?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Lisa?
Thank you, Dr. Hatter and your entire team for everything you're doing. You know, we get these emails every single day about more outbreaks and I feel like maybe you're spending more of your time doing contact tracing than being the superintendent of our school district. But then I hear these presentations tonight and I realize that actually, school business is still going on and you guys are still doing a fabulous job. So, you know, thank you for all of that.
I'm good.
Cheryl?
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Cole for a thorough presentation on the budget tonight. And thank you to all the guests who were on to field all of our questions.
I'm good, thank you.
I'm great. Thank you again, thank the administration for all of their hard work and all of our staff who's been involved in the budget season because we know it's not easy and we really truly appreciate them and the time they put into it, especially the time they give us at board meetings. So thank you very much. Ron, Tom, Lisa, anything? Can we have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? All right, thank you, everybody, good night.